We're gonna go ahead and get started. All right, welcome to the Lander County Commission Meeting Board, or Town Board of Battle Mountain and Austin Board of County Highway Commissioners, May 21st, 2020. This is also being held via audio conference by going to meeting.
This conference will now be recorded.
Do you want me to start over? Okay, okay. So, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right, Art, you wanna do the pledges, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna have a moment of silence. Good morning. Absolutely.
I can't hear Keith.
All right, he wants to move, Keith would like to move the health board meeting up. So, do you wanna do it above, before the consent items also, Keith?
No, you go through the regulations, make that item moving too.
Okay, very good. All right, so we'll move forward. Lander County Commission may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commission reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy, you wanna, for meetings in the...
Thank you, actually, just a couple of things that I did wanna make a comment on. We did have a LEAP meeting, virtual, on Monday, and that's, let's see, that's Local Empowerment Advisory Planters, and that's made up of Marilyn Kirkpatrick, the chairman from Clark County, and Mr. Goacchia from, let's see, he's the Eureka Chair, and then our NACO people and such, that's the one the government, the governor set forth. And that was for commissioners and staff and such on Monday. They were just kind of discussing the reopening process on all the different counties. I did wanna mention, and I know that you've got email on this too, but NACO has decided to cancel their annual meeting, which is in July, and was supposed to be held in Florida. And so, they will do a virtual meeting with the important things that have to be passed, and we have to, actually, we will be voting for a new vice president. So, they're just gonna do one virtual meeting and do our resolutions and everything then. And the other NACO meeting that we have coming up at the end of the month will be strictly virtual by a go-to meeting again. That's all I have, thank you.
All right, very good, Art.
The only meeting I was at was boothed.
Okay, so I have attended the NNRDA meeting, but the majority of it was, talked about was budgetary issues. And then I've, the hospital meetings, and that's all, it's been all budget cuts and things like that, nothing really beyond that. And the convention tourism, it was the same thing because of everything being closed up and the lack of funds, and then going back in and redoing budgets and stuff like that. So, those are the meetings I've attended, but not a lot to report. Brian?
I have nothing to report, Kathy.
All right, very good, Judy?
I have nothing to report.
All right. So, for staff reports, meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Actually, my report is very COVID-19 oriented, so when we get to the health board, I'll get into my part. I would ask that after this meeting, we have a, we have a closed litigation meeting.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on to public comment for non-agendized items only. Persons may be invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. Any discussion of those comments is at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. So, do we have any public comment? All right, not hearing any, we're gonna go ahead and go on.
Muted, unmuted.
So, for the consent items, so all matters listed under the consent agenda, excuse me, consent agendas are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for nominal charge. So, number one, approval of May 21st, 2020, agenda notice. Number two, approval of December 5th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number three, approval of December 19th, 2019, meeting minutes. Number four, approval of January 9th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number five, approval of January 23rd, 2020, meeting minutes. Number six, approval of February 27th, 2020, meeting minutes. Number seven, approval of April 23rd, 2020, meeting minutes. Number eight, approval of May 7th, 2020, special budget workshop meeting minutes. Number 10, approval of payroll change requests.
I'd be, we don't have any of the meeting minutes, and there are no payroll change requests, so the only thing on the consent agenda, Ashley, is number one, the approval of the agenda notice. So, I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any public comment on that? None, moving forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian votes aye.
All right, very good. So, number one, commissioners for possible action to approve/disapprove payments of bills. So, the, we'll be pulling out the point S check number 207780 from that batch. So, do we have a motion for the rest?
I'll make a motion, we approve all of the bills except the one noted, 207780.
All right, is there a second?
Second, I'll second.
All right, any public comment?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Going through the payment of the bills, under the payable description, I see a lot of descriptions referencing contract, customer, account. This has changed. We used to have a little bit more, a lot better description of what these bills were for, and I'm, I would like to see that again. You know, instead of just saying a customer number or whatnot is a better description of what these bills are for.
All right, any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I make a motion.
Brian votes, Brian votes aye.
I'm, I make a motion, we approve check number 207780.
Very good, we have a second?
Second.
Any public comment? All right, all in favor? Aye, opposed?
And I oppose because made payment to my employer, this is Brian.
All right, very good, moving on. Commissioners for possible action to approve or disapprove.
Kathy.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I might have only missed part of that. Did Brian oppose it or abstain?
Did you oppose or abstain, Brian?
Thank you, Keith, yeah, I meant to say I abstained.
Okay, 'cause I thought he said oppose, but he should abstain.
Okay, very good. So, are we all ready to go on? All right. All right, number two, is this where you... Okay, yeah, so we're gonna go ahead and move, jump to the, is it number seven, is that what it is? So, do we need to...
Muted, unmuted.
You need to recess.
Okay, so, so we're going to head, going ahead to recess to the Board of Lander County Commissioners and convene to the meeting of the Lander County Health Board and Post of the Lander County Board of Commissioners, the Lander County Sheriff, and the Lander County Health Nurse. All right.
All right, thank you.
We haven't read in number seven.
I gotta let me read it in real quick. No, sorry, I was just waiting for you to get everything passed out. So, okay, for number seven, for community manager, for possible action to discuss, the COVID-19 within Lander County and the community-wide testing.
All right, thank you. The first thing I wanted to bring up is I'd like to look at opening back up our building. I've had the discussion with the health officer with Brandy about it. If we follow some guidelines on it, we can put signs up that say, "If you have these symptoms, please don't come in." That would be, the symptoms would be the cough, the fever, flu-like symptoms, that we would ask or recommend masks be worn, but they are not required. And we'll keep our shades closed in the front offices. So, I, that's one thing I'd like to bring up. I'd like to do that Monday, if the board's okay, if the health board's okay with that. And then, I think you have some, some things to bring up.
Monday's a hard day.
Oh, I'm sorry, it'd be Tuesday, Monday's a hard day.
So, Tuesday?
And you do have this, this guide, or this pamphlet that Brandy's put together regarding the community-wide testing, community-based testing, and I'll let Brandy get into that.
So, Brandy, bang, go, for the record. So, we have the option to work with the DEM and the National Guard to do community-based testing. The National Guard comes in, they do it on a scale based on our population. We give them a total of people we want to task. Governor's requesting 10% of our population.
Brandy, excuse me, can I ask you to slow down? You're very difficult to hear with your mask.
Do you want me to take it off?
So, if you just slow down when you talk.
I just can't.
That might help, thank you.
It's just who I am, sorry. So, that's what you guys have in front of you, is community-based testing, to see if you guys are interested in doing that.
Bring the National Guard into Battle Mountain, into Lander County?
That would, that's...
No way.
...in the other counties.
I, we have the capability of doing this ourselves, do we not?
I, I think we do in discussion, but I believe Ron and Brandy, and we've all kinda talked about it a little bit. Can you go into a little more detail about...
So, the National Guard comes in, they're not carrying weapons. I mean, so ask me questions, and I'll tell you answers.
Well, regardless if they're carrying weapons or not, their presence, and it's unnerving to the community, and I don't, that extra government big brother type thing in here makes, I, myself, and I'm sure a lot of the other citizens, very uncomfortable. If it's something that we can handle ourselves, and we have enough of a testing supplies, and we can do it ourselves, I just think that we as a community, something that we handle without having one more part of government stepping in and helping. But I'll ask everybody else what their opinion is on that.
So, we, not we, but Battle Mountain Hospital's tested approximately like 420 people, so we're close to our 10% of the population. We just haven't reached out to our tribal partners, our uninsured, our low socioeconomic people. So, those are the groups that we would be targeting that aren't necessarily already going to the hospital for testing. The hospital's done a great job of testing who needs to be tested.
What's Dr. Peters say?
Um, I haven't discussed the community-based testing with him.
Isn't he the lead guy, and you didn't discuss this with Dr. Peters?
No, I'm the lead guy.
Huh?
I am the lead.
You're the lead?
Yep, Ron and I.
Don't you take Dr. Peters' advice?
Well, yes, I mean, but I have my own opinion about it.
You didn't ask him about having the National Guard come into Lander County?
But that wasn't, well, wasn't your idea, that's coming down.
No, I'm just presenting the idea.
That's coming down from the state, from attending the NACO, listening to the NACO meetings and attending those, correct, Keith?
Yes.
That's, those are suggestions from NACO, that's not anybody in our community saying that we want the National Guard here, so that's not us, that's them.
Yes, that is correct. It was something that I had just talked a little bit about with J.J. Goacchia. He's gonna look at it sometime after Memorial Day in Eureka County. Asked me if we wouldn't be interested in something like that. My initial response was, no, a little bit more in detail, but no. But I would talk to Brandy about it, and I would ask Brandy to talk with Ron about it, and then bring it to the board for discussion. So, and it was on the LEAP, one of the LEAP calls, the committee that puts together the recommendations for opening for the counties. Now, I do believe that we have the ability to do it. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brandy, we have the ability to do it, and other counties are doing it. Humboldt did it.
Humboldt did it with, everybody else is doing it with the National Guard assistance. They come in, they're fully staffed, they have all the supplies, they have the system down, they're doing it everywhere, they have the testers, they have it set up, it's in the packet how they do it. So, the other counties are using the National Guard to do it.
So, then what's your opinion of having the National Guard, once again, I'm sorry, what do you, did you...
I'm not opposed to the National Guard.
You're not opposed, Ron?
I think...
I'm opposed.
So, come over here, please, though, so we can hear you.
I think one of the things we have to remember is, when the National Guard is called out, they're not necessarily called out here to do protection, they're called out to help the community. I know with all my many years of Red Cross, when we had disasters, one of the first things we would call would be the National Guard. They would approve that, and they would help us with all the community things, bringing us water and so forth. So, when the governor called them out, they're here to assist us if we want them, that's all. I mean, it isn't like they're, they're coming in to do any kind of a strong-arm protection, and they have done it, they have the experience, if we have the people to do it. But when we first started discussing this, the hospital said, "We're not going to do, you know, all that, that main numbers of testing." And we do have to do that, that's part of, of the governor's plan, is so much of your population, so much of your percentage, what, 10%, has to be tested. So, if we can do it, that's fine, and if we can't, I just wanted to set aside the attitude that we seem to have where they're coming in, because they're coming in to help us with the community service if we want them to, that's all.
I agree.
But we've already, I mean, we've already did, at the 400 and, 400-plus that we've tested, we've almost tested our 10% quota.
Right.
Correct, so they're only gonna be coming in for a minute amount.
Right.
So, it's kind of...
So, for Humboldt County, their goal was to test 2,000 people, I think they reached out to 750 in a five-day period, so.
You're on.
Well, you asked of my opinion, my opinion, and I've told this to Brandy and to Keith, I'm opposed to them coming in. I feel Lander County can take care of their own, we're 100 shy, 100 and a quarter shy. At one point, I believe Brandy and I had a conversation, and we were doing 40 or some odd per day. It's a voluntary deal, it's not mandated.
Right.
So, people that wanna be tested can come in and be tested. If you bring the guards in, and we only have to test 100, unless we have it out on social media somewhere with a certain amount of timeframe to let the people know they're not in here to take over as martial law, you're looking two weeks away to notify these people. In two weeks, we may hit our goal, 5,500 or 5,600, whatever they're looking at. I think we could do it ourselves, but whatever you decide, I will go along with it.
I have a comment, when Ron's done.
All right, go ahead, Brian.
So, we, we accept, let's just say we accept, we allow the National Guard to come in. Is there any sort of documentation that comes along with us, allowing them to come into county? Because if so, I'd be very interested in reading what the fine print says. Once they're here, then do we have to comply with other things? I, I mean, I know it's simply said that they're just coming in to help, but that's how a lot of stuff is presented sometimes, and it's not necessarily the case when it's at the end of the road. I'm strongly opposed against it. I feel that we can take care of our own, I agree with Sheriff Hunger and Commissioner Clark.
Brian, to answer your question, I know that the emergency manager has to request it, but as far as seeing any paperwork, I have not seen any at all, so I can't answer your, all of your questions. Brandy, do we have any tracers in Lander County?
Contact tracing? So, our contact tracing, not anybody who's certified as a contact tracer, no.
And we're not going door to door?
No.
Okay.
And that's an option, so like, when we do our flu pod, we have paramedics that go to the senior homes and stuff like that, so that's an option, that's how we reach out to the people that can't come to the...
Which I think is a viable option, and it...
But that's not a tracer.
No, contact tracing goes through the state.
And Robert, isn't the hospital doing the contract, contact tracing? Or is that you that's doing the con...
So, contact tracing is done through the state, they have different entities that they've employed to do the contact tracing. As far as the health officer goes, I just call and I interview them, and I check on them daily to make sure they're doing fine, but I don't perform their contact tracing that goes through the state.
Okay, I understand that. So, this, did you have something to say?
I was just gonna say, as a suggestion, maybe we just continue with the way we're doing it, and if we do at some point feel that we get some big influx, and we need additional staffing or National Guard to come in and help with testing, we could call an emergency health board meeting, and it could be discussed at that time. Just my two cents.
That's the motion I was gonna make.
Well, and I, something that was interesting that they had on the news the other night about the same idea, that when the, the CEO of the hospital had said this comment too, ER visits and office visits are down by 60% because people are scared to go. You know, and so I, I think that it'd also be a little more leery for people to go if the National Guard is here, maybe if we did a pod, like we did a pod, and people volunteer.
But that's what the National Guard does.
See, I think, so if we do that ourselves, I think it'll be a less, a little less...
Intimidating.
Intimidating if we're doing it instead of having the National, because they don't have to be carrying anything, they can be carrying pencils, and it's still a little unnerving for the community. And we are almost complete in our numbers anyway.
Right.
So, I think it's kinda, I'm for us trying to continue to finish ourselves, but...
I'll make a motion that, at this time, we'll continue with what we're presently doing with our COVID-19 testing, and if in the future Brandy feels the need to come back because we have high numbers, we'll consider other options.
I'll second.
All right, any, any public comment? Not hearing any.
I have a public com...
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
Unmuted.
I have a public comment.
Okay, go ahead, will you not, who, who is this?
This is Sadie Southern, Lander County.
Okay. Go ahead.
Am I too loud? Um, just a couple of things to ask or bring up. If we were to have a county employee go in for testing, whether it's currently the situation here, or if they were to come in, would the whole county have to go on quarantine?
No.
In regards to they've been in the building, we don't know exactly where they've been.
So, the way the other counties are doing is...
I just wanna make sure that we can make it through our election as far as having that security of the masks of them coming into the building, that type of thing. We already have a county in the state that had to quarantine, I believe it was the whole courthouse for two weeks, which has been two or three weeks back, because there was a person that did have the COVID. So, my question or my concern, so I would like to just put it out there that I do want people to still be careful wearing their masks, that type of thing. If my office was to have to be quarantined, I don't know who would come in and complete the election. The state is very tied up, other counties don't have enough staff to have anybody come in to help this. So, just for the clerk's office, in my personal opinion, I would prefer that we keep wearing the masks, make sure we have that coverage, so in that way, that doesn't occur here in Lander County.
Sadie, those can only be recommendations. You can't, there's no law.
Yes, yes, I just wanted to put it out there.
There's no law that says you have to do that. We're, we're, a lot of people are, political people, governors and such, are dabbling in unconstitutional behavior. And the mask does not stop coronavirus from getting through, it's just that simple. Sadie?
Okay, and I, I'm, go ahead.
Hey, Sadie, this is Keith. Hey, is this about opening the doors? Is it, is this what you're referring to?
Correct.
Okay, well, we, there will be, there will be safeguards in place, and you can always have your staff wear masks. I, like I said, I don't wanna open the curtains between the public and the office, and the individual offices. It's just, and people come in all the time, when they go up, they go to court, you know, we have deliveries. Things are going on, it's just gonna be a little bit more of an open access, but we will put on there that masks are not required, but we would recommend them. And, 'cause we can't tell people to wear them, but you can have your staff wear them while they're, while they're at work.
If I come to your office...
Yes, I appreciate...
If I come to your office, Sadie, and you're all wearing masks, I'll put a mask on. I think it's a courtesy more than anything else.
So, I have a question.
Yes, yes, and I agree with you, Commissioner Clark.
All right, go ahead. So, on that topic, do we have masks that we could make available as people come through the door?
Yes, we do.
And so then, like, every office will have those, or where would they get them? Or is it like a thing outside, like they have at the hospital?
I believe, I believe most offices have the masks available, and if we need to put some for, for public, we can come up with something in the foyer out there. We can put a table out there with some masks on it and ask the people to pick them up, ask. Wanna make that real clear, we would ask, if we're not gonna require it, so.
So, all right, so any more public comment?
And I would like to say, I appreciate everything that everybody's been doing and working together on this. It's been very helpful.
All right, very good.
Thank you, Sadie.
Thank you. No further public comment? So, we had a...
Uh, I've got something.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Jason Blake out here at the hospital.
Oh, hello, Jason.
Hi, I appreciate your conversation and the pursuits that you're, you're moving towards. From the hospital, I'd just say that we will do our best to support and help Brandy and the health board in completing these testing requirements. One thing that, that we need to think about and logistically going forward is, the supplies for testing are very difficult to get right now. It would need to be a request through the emergency manager to get those supplies from the state in preparation for this testing.
For the remaining testing that we have? So, now is that something, Keith, that you can work with Ron to get that? Or Ron, do you already have that, so you can have these? If we're gonna do it ourselves, we have to have the supplies, so are you, do you have the ability to have that?
Yes, I believe, Brandy, didn't we submit for...
We didn't submit for testing supplies.
When Brandy and I had our conversation, we had that topic, conversation. And I think at that point, the county had 1,400.
The hospital does.
The hospital.
So...
The hospital did, but all of those items are becoming harder to get.
If Jason needs it, he can fill out the request form through Brandy or whatever. It sends it to me, and then I send it to the logistics department of DEM, and then they forward it on, so...
So, but what's the timeframe in that, is my only...
Sometimes it varies, depending on how much they have, and they had a process there at one point that was very difficult because they wanted to know the burn rate, they wanted to know if Brandy had went out and tried to get it somewhere else and was denied, and what the cost was, and it was a... It was to the point to where the conversation that her and I had was that it might be simpler just to order the stuff ourself, pay for it, and submit the bill to Keith, so he could submit the bill back to the grant process, which would make our lives, and mainly Brandy's, a lot easier than what it is. So, if we need it, it's just a matter of sending a request form in, and I usually get it out. If I get it during the day, I can send it out that same day.
Just, that, that's my only concern, is to make sure that we have the supplies, because part of the, basically, the agreement with the governor to reopen was this, that part of this is what we have to do, so I don't want there to be, be a huge lag time in having this completed.
Well, the question I'd have would be to Jason, is how many tests does he have available now?
Did you, were you able to hear that, Jason?
I, I did, can, can you still hear me?
Yeah, oh yeah, we can still hear you.
Well, we have capabilities of providing tests, but we have had to use materials that aren't specifically made for nasal pharyngeal swabbing. And so, for some of these tests, I would, I would strongly suggest that we reach out to the state and try to get those materials that are specific for this test. and try to get those materials that are specific for this test.
So and then that, we can go ahead and get that done and if there is a problem, there's a red flag, that we jump on it right away and say, hey, we are trying to get this stuff and we can't, and so we can try to get that part covered.
The other question I would have and maybe Brandy can answer this, she knows. There's, there's a lot of different tests out there and I know what the National Guard is using or did when I called them. What, what, what test do you want?
I think that's the recommended test is the nasal pharyngeal swab.
That's the recommended, but what is the National Guard using?
Those ones.
Okay, cause when I called them, at the meeting that we had with Keith and uh, the doctors.
Oh yes.
They were using that uh, finger, the finger puncture.
Almost like the antibody one?
Yes.
Yeah, and that was the ones they were using and at that point the doctor that was there at our meeting, he did not recommend that.
Well, and the state doesn't recommend that either. The state doesn't recommend that either, I think that they want the nose.
At that point in time when we had the meeting, that was one of them that they were looking at.
Yeah, they certainly since then.
But if she'll get it to me, if the, if we need it or whatever, we'll do our best to do it.
I don't know that a pod style is really necessary, if anything, we can just schedule it and.
Alright, well whatever you think is best and if we start to have a problem and we can't get them tested, then we can uh, do a pod if we have to, so as long as we'll.
I have one last question. How long, what's the shelf life on these tests? Is it worth stocking up?
That would be a question for Jason.
Jason? Jason?
Um, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, um, what's the shelf life on these tests? Is it worth spending money to stock up on them? And are these tests even accurate? I mean, I, I hear a lot of inaccuracies with the testing being used.
These PCR tests that we send off to the state are very accurate. Um, I'm sure there is a level of inaccuracy like in all things, but uh, they are FDA approved.
Well, that's.
Um, as far as the shelf life, I don't know exactly what the length of time is in shelf life, what we have had to do is we've had to put together our own kits using various items, so we, we get the swabs, we get the um, twist cap vials and then we get the saline solution separately. And to buy those separately right now is very difficult as they're all under allocation.
Okay, so we don't know what, what the shelf life is and if we should spend a lot of money and stock up on them for the future, okay, we ready to vote?
My question is Southern Lander County and if we will be doing something special to take care of.
I have a question.
If we did.
One second please.
If we did the pod style here, then yes, we would go to Southern Lander. Um, I don't see putting up a pod style, I think it'll be a lot of manpower, we actually don't have to perform this kinda test. So if anything, I'll just have to schedule them at the clinic one day a week and I, if I go up there, I can do it at the ambulance barn or something in Austin and do one day or something like that.
See how many wanna volunteer for that swab?
Yeah, I mean, definitely.
So, go ahead, was that, Sadie, were you wanting to say something?
Yes, this is Sadie Southern Lander County clerk. Sorry if I didn't hear the answer, but my question is, is if we do have somebody test positive that works in the courthouse. What would we have to do for? I don't know the correct wording on it. Would everybody have to go into quarantine? I guess maybe this is for Brandy and Keith or?
So if somebody tests positive for COVID, then their close contacts, which are within six feet for greater than ten minutes are also sent to be tested. If they test positive, then they isolate for at least fourteen days, it's turning out that it's much longer than that. So they would isolate for fourteen days.
Okay, so my question is, is um, and sorry if I'm naive on this, we all use the postage machine, um, there's several that use the same restroom. Um, would that be considered? You know, those people having to go into the quarantine?
No, it's like close contact, so face to face or intimate contact, it's like household style, so if you're it's mostly households that are contracting it from each other. And I think the surfaces in the office or in the building are being cleaned frequently, so you're probably okay. And as long as you're watching your mask, then you're okay.
Okay, great, thank you much.
Brandy?
Yes.
Have they increased the, the turnaround time for the testing?
The testing isn't taking very long to come back, like three to five days, just depending with the state lab has seen an influx in tests, cause everybody's doing their community-based testing.
So are we good on public comment? Alright, going back, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, any opposed?
Brian, both aye.
Alright, one, okay.
Well, I just had one, one other question, Brandy, I've had several uh, questions on how the contract tr- contact tracing works. And if you could go into a little, a little detail how it works, if it's broke out into zip code, if it's broken out by city or county a- and how a person is, is uh, traced. Um, for instance, if, if we have a positive in Lander County, is it gonna say, is it in Austin or Kingston or Battle Mountain zip code, or how would that work?
So when I'm contacted from the state epidemiology department, I'm usually provided a name and a birthday and an address. So they tell me, we have two positives for Lander County, this is who they are, they give me contact information, that's as far as the information that I'm given goes. So none of the other counties are reporting it, like, you know, Washo isn't saying these people live in Sparks, these ones live in Reno or what, and I don't know their jurisdictions really, but.
Well, they all have their own zip codes.
Right, nobody, I'm, it's not being broken down by zip code, I'm just provided patient information, demographics.
Alright. Are we ready to adjourn out of? While the question's answered, are we ready to? Alright, so we're gonna go ahead and adjourn the meeting of the Lander County Health Board and reconvene the meeting of the Lander County Board of County, uh, County Commissioners?
Muted. Unmuted.
Okay, so we're going to, um, move on to number two. Um, Commissioners for possible action to approve, disapprove the Lander County, uh, final budget for FY twenty twenty one and the submission to the Department of Taxation.
Keith, is the final budget ready to go, or, or are we uh, still fine tuning it?
One second Brian, we're having some technical difficulties.
Touch the button now.
Oh, there you go, you're on. Uh, Brian has a question for Keith, so when he's all done, he'll. Alright Brian, go ahead.
Well, I was just asking Keith if the, the final budget is all ready to go, or are we still fine tuning it?
So where we're at right now Brian, I know that, that Tom and Lakin night before last were here till late, seven, seven thirty and then last night till about nine thirty to try to get everything put in order, but to answer your question, it, it's not ready yet, they're still putting the numbers into the, into the spaces. Um, but what can be done is, uh, the commission can vote to accept the budget with the uh, the changes that you guys put in there. She can put all the numbers in it, put it all together, make sure everything balances out. And then submit copies to you for uh, review and then final signature. It can, it can be date stamped June first, um, so we act, we have a little bit more time. But, um, and I'll let Lakin and, and Tom get into it from, from there, if that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, Lakin Sullivan for the record, so uh, when Tom got here on Tuesday, he informed Keith and I that the final budget doesn't have to be in hand at the meeting. You just approve the tentative with the changes and adopt that as your final budget, we, he pulled the N R S for us and we read it. Um, so that is kind of what we're asking for today, the changes have been made in all three budgets, it's just getting the numbers to match. Um, we finally got the main Lander County budget, uh, done this morning. But, um, we also are still looking into the net proceeds into the reserve fund. Uh, we tried to call Kelly with the state yesterday, but she wasn't in, so um, there's just some clarification that we wanna make sure we're okay to transfer a lump sum into there. Um, but we do have budget, uh, eight million of the net proceeds to go in there for, the net proceeds for next year. Um, and then we're looking at taking, I can't remember what the exact number was, was twenty-five? Twenty-five million out of our unassigned money that we have, um, it shows we have about thirty-six million, I think, in unassigned money in our audit book from last year, so that will, but we need to make sure it's okay to move that. So that's, we're kinda waiting on that.
What's the total that we could put in a rainy day?
As far as we've looked, there's no cap on it.
So Commissioner, ju- just for clarification, um, on the, it's thirty, I thought it was thirty-nine, Lakin. It's, there's, we have thirty-nine million in unassigned funds right now. So, my recommendation or my thought on that was we would take twenty-five million out of that, wh- I, I just don't wanna str- take it down to zero. So that would still leave us, um, fourteen million in there in unassigned. And then we take net proceeds and we take eight million from our current net proceeds, it should be here sometime next week and that would be part of it. What, what we're looking at, what, uh, Lakin and Tom were looking into with Kelly Langley at, at taxation was are we able to do a lump sum transfer like that? So we're gonna actually, they're gonna actually go back over the past five years and, and look at our net proceeds, am I doing this right Tom? Okay, yeah, and they're gonna look at our net proceeds and they're gonna take a, a, uh, an average out of that and say and, and that we're gonna show that we, we're, we are taking that money out of an average of the last five years. So if that money ends up being more, um, we, we maybe be able to look at more, I just didn't wanna drain our unassigned funds down to zero.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I, I, and then uh, we'll take money out of our net proceeds, um, and like I say, we've got some projected amounts that I I don't wanna talk about cause right now, because we're not sure, they're just a projection. But next week when we get those numbers, you will certainly be notified of what our net proceeds are as soon as I get those numbers or, or uh, Laura or, or, or Lakin get them, we'll make sure that you have, know what our exact cut is, once we get it.
So my concern is on the, the general, because we've addressed the rainy day fund and, and the rest on net proceeds. So, how are we balancing and do we truly have to cut somewhere? Um, are you thinking that if we don't balance, we're gonna take it out of net proceeds? Not, not for the general budget, right?
No, no, thi- this is, this is for our rainy day fund.
Right, that's what I thought, but I'm saying, how can we approve a budget if we don't even know if we still have to cut something? Because everything's uncertain, I mean, we're gonna gas to budget on gas taxes, sales tax and C T X tax and all that. But, um, we may have to amend as the years, the year goes on, but I at least wanna, wanna see the balance, I mean, I don't.
We do have the, the main Lander County budget here with us, um, that you guys are welcome to look at if you would like to. Um, as far as Tom and I have spoke, we're, we're fine as, as far as the.
I mean, I want, I'd like to see the final numbers, I mean, I feel like I'm, I'm voting on the Obama health plan here, pass it and we'll look later. You know, please.
Right.
Uh, did, did we balance, I mean, are we okay or do we need to cut?
No, so, so we are, we are very okay, I, I will say that. We did, or I should say Lakin and Tom worked, uh, and Cindy, we, we need to do that. Everything look, is in a twenty percent reduction right now and we're still, I'm sorry, what?
Twenty-five.
Oh, twenty-five, I'm sorry, twenty-five percent.
Reduction on what, our income?
Uh, no.
The revenues.
On revenues, yes, so we, we've, they've taken all this into account, we're, we're fine. We, we aren't gonna be overspend or, or anything like that, or in that, any kind of a deficit.
So what's our final number? What, what are we balancing with revenue and outcome?
That should be in the battle, in the uh, the county budget that she, that Lakin has a copy of.
I, I guess I'm concerned why we didn't get a copy, I, I.
They, they were actually working on it until literally ten minutes before the meeting.
There was, so there was.
The last one you passed out was hot, still warm from the, the copying machine, so I'm, I'm okay with that.
Well, I would like to comment and I totally agree with Patsy that, um, I don't really wanna pass anything until I actually see the numbers and have them right in front of me and comparing and, and going over again what we've approved before. And I, I don't wanna pass a, a budget that we can't see.
Go ahead Tom.
Good morning, so my, my name is Tom Granthbury, I'm a local government and finance consultant, I worked for taxation for many years in the local government finance department, I was actually the supervisor. And uh, this is the third year I've worked with Lander County on the budget. A couple of things I'd like to point out. We should have probably brought this, uh, new improved tentative budget for you folks to have. We were trying to reconcile some schedules and we just ran out of time, but you're right, you should have the tentative in front of you so you can see what we're, we're talking about. Uh, I believe the tentative that I worked with Cindy and uh, the, the document they sent to taxation, I think they had expenditures of about seventy-five million and now we're down to sixty-nine point four, so you know, that, you, you should be able to see that. And then we did reduce the uh, revenue. Uh, so, several things can happen, you, uh, you know, we could continue to make these changes, uh, I feel we have a good, uh, uh, a good amount, excuse me, a good tentative here to be adopted. Uh, the one thing we did leave out is, uh, the amount, the amount that you wanna transfer into this new rainy day net proceeds fund.
I'm having a hard time hearing Keith.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll speak up, I'm soft spoken.
It's Tom Brian.
I'll speak up, uh, so what I told Keith was, and we talked about the twenty-five million, twenty-two million taking it out of that unreserved, uh, any fund balance in the general fund. What I suggested today is, let's look at the audited numbers and see what exact amount was put in the general fund, what net proceeds money was put in the general fund. Uh, and then we can just put in a message in the, the budget message that we've researched this. Uh, the amount of money we wanna transfer is X, it's money that's, you know, it's, it's hard money, if you will, that's gone into the general fund. And had we had this new fund five years ago, that's what we would have done, okay? So I'm not sure what that number's gonna be, but there's three, three and a half million that's budgeted for FY twenty. And that money's gonna get to the county here in the next week or so. And then I believe we talked about budgeting eight million for next year at this time. So next year at this time when we're looking at the, the twenty-two, will be days from getting maybe that eight million. So if you think about there, there's, there's the possibility of eleven and a half million within a year. And then we wanna do the research on the transfer. And that could be ten, it might be twenty, I, I just don't know, but I'd like to go back and look in the audits just to see what money was deposited in the general fund that was net proceeds number, uh, money, excuse me. Uh, and the reason I suggested we call Kelly Langley, you know, it's that large of a transfer. Uh, even though you've got the money, it's there, it's right in the audit. Uh, I just wanted to visit with them, give them a heads up and just make sure that we're okay, they're okay with us doing that large transfer.
Okay, so what, uh, the latest that we can have numbers in front of us, I mean, are we at the end of the wire right now as of today?
So we have until, we have to have our, our finals signed budget by this board on s- uh, date stamped till, uh, June first, June one. So I, we could, uh, they could work on it and we could, we'd have to do another meeting next week, we could call a special meeting for the final budget. But I, there's some advertising, um, protocols that go along with that and, and I don't, would we meet that timeframe Tom? I don't think we would.
No, I'm, I'm not totally sure, but you, you probably speak to that, it, it has to be three days, I believe. Is it the open meeting law that you'd have to have it, it's three days?
If you posted it tomorrow, we could, we could have a meeting on next Friday.
No, but we're speaking of the, um, the publication, that has to go in the paper, it can't, it, it has to be at least seven days, but no more than fourteen. And I don't, do we?
Uh, what I think there is, that, that's a requirement for this, uh, your first tentative budget meeting.
For this one?
Yeah, and so you've met that criteria. This would be, uh, calling a special meeting to fine tune again this tentative and adopt it as your final. So I think you'd only be required for the three-day open meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so you, you've met the requirement of the first budget meeting.
So I, I guess we'll be looking at a meeting next week and we can. So I, I guess we'll be looking at a meeting next week and we can publish it. Uh, if we got it out tomorrow, it'd be simple one i- or one item budget or, uh, agenda. If we got it out tomorrow, it would be, um, Tuesday, Wednesday, it'd be Thursday, we could have a meeting.
It's the twenty-eighth.
Yeah. That's correct.
Means we've met every week this month.
Yep.
Brian, what do you think?
Uh, no, I, I, I mean, I share Patsy's, uh, concerns. Um, but yeah, I mean, I'm fine with what the board, I'll need to go.
I'll make a motion that we, I guess, I don't know, defer this agenda item for a meeting next Thursday to discuss it.
So, do we have a second?
I'll second the motion for the special budget meeting on the twenty-eighth.
So do we have any public comment?
I would ask maybe we could go ahead and set a time now.
Okay.
Do you want to do nine o'clock, ten o'clock? I mean, we can do it teleconference, you know.
We'd love to, you, Patsy.
It's, it's what, ten, ten, okay?
Yeah.
At ten o'clock.
Ten.
I'll, I'll amend my motion to include setting the time for ten o'clock.
So then we have a second? Did she, did, I didn't hear, did she do a second?
Yeah, she seconded.
Oh, you seconded, I went. Okay, you made the motion?
No, Judy made the motion, I seconded.
All right, any public comment? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Brian, both aye.
Okay.
Muted, unmuted.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, so, um, going on to number three for, uh, for possible action to schedule a Zoom meeting with NDOT to discuss our annual workbook?
Yes, so, um, we have an annual workshop with, uh, NDOT. And what they usually do is come to the meeting and they discuss their projects and any projects that the commission, um, may have them to look into. Obviously with everything going on, they've canceled it. If we would like to do some ti- if the commission would like to do some type of a Zoom meeting or a, a conference call, we can, I can look into, or I can get that set up with, uh, Lee Bonner. But they are not gonna be coming to the counties this year, um, because of everything going on. And, uh, the workbook was forwarded to everybody. Let me know if you didn't get it or, or it's, it's lost in space somewhere and I'll get you another copy. It, depending on what you want to do.
Did they give us any days at all or we just choose some times and, and I would say let's, um, maybe if we can put it at the same time as one of our commissioners meetings?
How, however you'd like to do it, yeah.
Maybe if we've, if we look at June and then do, um, you know, if we don't have too long a schedule or something like that, on the agenda, we could do the meeting while we're all still here. Just set up a time.
Yeah, I, I would call, I would, I would call, um, Lee Bonner and see how we can set that up and if that's a time. Um, just so you know, uh, June the eleventh is gonna, it, it's a short agenda, but they're both pretty long items. Um, not, the first one that I'm gonna have on there would be the investigation is building the report on that. That might take some time. And then I'm also gonna do, have, uh, Summit here for a levy update. So there's only two items. It, it looks short on paper, but it could go long due to the, the report on the, on this, on the, uh, construction defects of several of our buildings as well as the levy update. I spoke with Summit the other day. Um, and, um, they are pretty much done with their drawings and plans and so forth and needs to be presented to the commission. So we might be able to fit it in that day, but, um, it, it'll probably be, I'm guessing it'll, it, it could go into the afternoon with those three items alone, if, if NDOT is available.
You know, if they're, if they're flexible enough, we could, we could put it on. And then we'll, um, we'll ask them, you know, we, we could have maybe an hour each and be done by eleven o'clock. Um, so we could like tentatively schedule for eleven and tell them if we run over that we'll, we'll work with them at one and see if, see how that would work for them. Give them two times perhaps. And that way if we take the whole morning, we can come back at one. But I don't want us to be done at eleven and have to come back at one. That's what I'm saying. So if, so if they're okay, if we give them two times maybe.
If that's the, the decision of the board, the decision of the board, I will certainly, uh, give Mr. Bonner a call and email you with the details.
And if the eleventh doesn't work, then we can always do the following one, what, the twenty-fifth? But I'm, I'm okay with, since, since we're not gonna do it in person, it's not gonna take as long. I, I know that because what we're gonna go through is gonna say, okay, this, this, this and this. So I bet we won't be like a normal day where we take all morning to go through and down and get a lot of reports. I, I don't see that happening.
Is there any, um, special projects that the board would be looking at other than, I know we've talked pretty in-depth about the, the truck, uh, route at Maverick or the congestion there. We've talked about, um, some type of a signaling at, at the crosswalk for the high school. Um, is there any other special projects that the, the board would be looking at?
Well, we've, we've had a couple down in the south that they still, it's, it's on the list, but we are, we haven't gone anywhere. So it's, it's getting their input on it, on where we are, so.
Well, I, and to keep in mind too that, um, a lot of those projects are probably gonna stay stagnant for a little while with all of the budget cuts. Um, when I spoke with Pete Okatia, he said unless it was, um, a, a, an necessity, um, they were gonna be moving forward with some of these other projects because they just don't have the funding for it. So then they're all gonna be on hold for indefinitely.
I think it's gonna be a fairly quick meeting, like I said, not, not our usual.
They're gonna come tell us they don't have any money and, so. All right, so then do we have a motion on this one?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we ask Keith to contact Endot and see if they might be available for us, um, to discuss our plans on, um, the eleventh of June, giving them two times. And if that's not available, the twenty-fifth of June.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so do we have any public comment? All right, Harry, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Brian, both aye. Muted, unmuted.
The Highway fifty project in Austin has started, yes. They stopped because of the snow, but other than that.
Well, the thing about it is they, this was already budgeted, um, several years ago. So, um, the COVID virus hasn't affected that as far as Endot's plans. Projects that are going on now have been in the works for several years and the money's already been allocated. So we won't be seeing a lot of projects in the next couple of years, uh, because of this virus.
So, all right, so we're gonna be moving on to, uh, number four for possible action to implement Atlanta County burn, uh, burn ban?
So thi- this was asked to, to be brought forward, um, to get the board's, uh, thoughts and approval or disapproval on putting the burn ban into effect. And I did talk with Ron about, about it. So, uh, I don't, did you have something you wanted to bring forth, Ron? I know Forest Service and BLM have put some, some restrictions in place already.
Ron Uger for the record. Uh, Keith is correct. We did talk. I have talked a little with Patsy. I looked into the burn ban that the, the Forest Service had put out, which is very, very restrictive. And I believe it came out in, uh, April or March or April. But anyway, their, their restrictions are very restrictive on the forest land. And that's where you can only smoke a cigarette inside your vehicle, no open fires, no barbecues, nothing. It's very restrictive there. At the same point in time, the Bureau of Land Management, they put out theirs also, which wasn't near as restrictive. In other words, you could have a fire, you had to have a six-foot area cleaned off, a five-gallon bucket of water, a shovel. Uh, you could smoke in certain areas as long as you use caution. So the BLMs was less restrictive than the Forest Service. Uh, and they ended at this point in time when they wrote it, the ban would, they would look at the ban at the end when the governor opened us back up. They would relook at it then. So that's what the, the Forest Service and the BLM has done in our areas.
I think that we should definitely, um, have a burn ban. It's, even though we got some really nice rain, it's not gonna last. And we don't want to wait till the last minute and have to come back and say, oh, let's do it. So I'm gonna make a motion that we put a burn ban in effect in Lander County.
When?
Immediately.
My question is, which, which, which one are you planning on following?
Department of Forestry or BLM's kind of pattern?
We, we can't, all we can really do, Brian, is recommend. We don't have any teeth in this, but we've never had any problems that I know of with people following our recommendation. But since we had rain, I'd like to wait a week till June first because then people know we're talking about it. And if they have anything scheduled to yard work or whatever, they can get it taken care of. What do you have, Ron?
I agree with that, Art.
And I'm not opposed to what any you want to do, but at this point in time, keep in mind, we're making a burn ban for just our, our area. The district. Okay, well, keep in mind, outside of this is BLM, there's already theirs and the Forest Service down south. Right. So it would be kinda, uh, the town of Battle Mountain, the hilltop area. Right. This type of thing, more or less private ground is what I'm asking going. And, and I visited with the, uh, Battle Mountain Fire Chief on this and it's been several weeks back that we had the visit. Um, but at that point, we kinda wanted to do what Art did, give it a time. Because right now, up until this rain, everything was pretty dry and people were cleaning up their yards and doing their burns and, and getting rid of the weeds that they had. And I think that's good and they, we haven't had any calls on that. With this rain, it's, it moist, put a lot of moisture in the ground a little bit. But I still think there's people out there that want to clean up their properties, um, you know.
Kathy, hold on, Ted's off. Oh, so hang on one second. Did it just drop off?
Hello?
Hey, hold on. Are you there?
Yeah.
All right, very good.
That's my, my same thoughts, Ron. But I, I would like to see it, uh, extended a little bit, you know, it, we're supposed to have more moisture. People have used a lot of common sense, so for our area, you know, I, I would like to extend it a little bit. Give, give the townspeople an opportunity or.
And some notice, so they have to notice.
A little bit of. I was gonna say June first, but if you think this moisture will carry us another week. I think this moisture will carry us a little bit. I think we're gonna see a little bit of greening up, to be honest with you. But then it's gonna get hot again, so. But the problem is down in Kingston. But that's, that's, uh, Forest Service, isn't it?
No, that's that, but I'm, I'm talking about the part that we do have the oversee and that is the residential areas. And, and it has happened. People have, have a fire in, you know, they go out and burn their garbage. And, uh, when it comes up and it goes and all of a sudden it goes to the neighbors and I kid you not, we have had this happen. Um, and when you put a burn ban on, you're saying we don't have any kind of enforcement and everything. Actually, we do have some, but the big key is if you've got a burn ban and something gets away from you and goes to your neighbors and burns up your neighbor's fence, your insurance company looks at that and says, excuse me.
Yes, they do.
You are in violation of the burn ban. And all of a sudden their insurance is backing out. So I mean, if we have it in, people need to take it serious. The reason we did it early was because of the dryness. Um, I'm talking about generally in Atlanta County, but mostly because of the COVID. And they said, we just don't want our people out there if they don't need to be. Everything is so dry. Let's do some extra protections. Let's get this in, let's get it on the record. And so they are not able to do these types of things.
What, what's the, what can you do legally? You said you, you, that you can do something legally.
Yeah, we can give, we can give citations.
I don't think we have a resolution or a county.
Yeah.
Anything, we can write a ticket for, so.
But the biggest thing is if you're responsible, your insurance company's gonna have a real problem.
That's the big thing and that's what I keep telling people.
Yeah.
If your fire jumps, you know, your insurance company may say, hey, you didn't follow this, uh, county recommendation.
Right, if you have a, if the county has put in a burn ban and that's one of the biggest things.
I have a question for Bert. Are you gonna do the community cleanup this year?
I can't, a little louder, I can't hear you.
I was just asking Bert if he was gonna do the community cleanup this year.
Yes.
And do you have dates set for that?
Not yet, but we, we definitely plan on doing it again.
Well, um, and, and I, I can see the, the point of extending it, so I agree with that. I was just wondering if we could incorporate it into, um, after the community cleanup maybe? But since we don't have a date.
We, we can get right on that if you'd like.
And maybe, you know, allow the co- community cleanup and when that's finished, then the burn ban goes in effect? Is that?
Well, I think now's a good time to do the community cleanup because nobody's allowed to do anything. So they'll probably be happy to do some cleanup because everybody's looking for something to do. So I think, uh, it'd be easier to get them to do stuff while, while we still have some restrictions as far as being around each other and travel. But if we try to do the community cleanup as soon as possible, then we'll probably have a lot more people getting involved in doing it.
Yeah, it's pretty obvious that people are doing a lot of yard work. All I have to do is to go, go down to Ace.
Oh, yeah.
And when the.
People are bored.
Truck comes in on Wednesdays, by Friday, all their plants are pretty much picked over and gone, so.
And maybe, um, when they put the notices out for the community cleanup, they can, you know, put on the notice that, um, burn ban will be, um, be put into effect on, on this day, whatever.
Um, so to not, so we're not squeezing your head in a vise if you give us some kind of, um, time that you could get that organized so then we know after that to do the date for the burn ban, so.
We will, Bert, I'm just for the record, we'll finish organizing it today and tomorrow. We'll get some, some little, you know, something we can staple up and then maybe the end of next week, start the, the community cleanup. I gotta get ahold of the garbage companies and see when we can get dumpsters over, make sure they're available. And, uh, we'll make it happen.
Okay.
Would the first week of June, wanna look at the calendar, first week of June be?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I was looking at it. Just second to the calendar.
Now, do you?
I just wanna give you ten days.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, then we can have the ban.
And, and put on our little pamphlet, the burn ban will be in effect.
Right after.
You know, I don't know, what do you guys want, the first week of June through the tenth and then fifteenth start?
So maybe start the fifteenth?
Do you want to start the burn ban on the fifteenth of June?
That gives them three weeks.
Yeah, we can put whatever date you guys want on. You just let us know what date to put on there and we'll make it.
I think that's fair enough.
All right, I'll amend my motion, um, to put the burn ban into effect June fifteenth.
All right, second?
I'll second.
Any po- comments? Harry, none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Brian, both aye.
All right, none opposed? All right, so going on to number four. Huh, we absolutely can. Tell them what you want, Patsy. You tell me, ten minutes, five minutes, five minutes? Take a five-minute break. Thank you. All right, you guys, we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna get, um, get back in order here so we can get our, finish our stuff. Okay, we're moving on to number five, uh, for possible action to approve, disapprove the annual maintenance and support agreement um, with the Justice AV Solutions JAVS in the amount not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and authorize the county manager to sign.
So this is our annual JAVS contract. The JAVS contract deals with everything where, that goes on in here as far as our audio and our video. Um, there's been no change to it other than the dates. Um, and I do believe Ted did have the opportunity to review it.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Ted.
I'll make the motion that we approve the.
I'll make the motion that we approve the annual maintenance and, and support agreement with Justice AV Solutions JAVs in the amount not to exceed seven thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and authorize the county manager to sign.
I'll second the motion.
Any, are you ready for public comment? Any public comment? All right, not hearing any, all in favor?
Muted.
Aye.
Aye.
Unmuted.
Brian, both aye.
All right, so number six, um, for the assessor, for possible action to approve, disapprove the CAMA system contract between GSA Corporation and Lander County. Hi.
Molly, by golly.
All right, you're on.
I'm just here if you have any questions, Molly Gonzalez, for the record.
No, I wanna tell you why, Hannah Fenola, so. DEVNET has been a nightmare, they haven't followed through on anything. On the building side, that we're supposed to get programming, we've had one meeting, nothing set up. They've overextended the startup date and all the, a lot of counties are tired of, they're jumping on to the same system.
Okay.
We couldn't get them to open up our mine and mill, which, um, is one of our major, that we get lots of our funding from, is for be, being able to bill all of our mines, and they wouldn't open that up to allow us to bill. So we've had to resort back to the ADS program to even get those bills sent out for that revenue coming in. So basically, they delivered an unfinished program that wasn't really working.
So now, cause just a little confusion, now do, do each office, um, have they at one time used DEVNET? Some of them use them, some of they don't, it works for some, doesn't work for everyone?
So what happened is, they built a program for the assessor and for the treasurer, and they were supposed to build one for the building and and planning and for the business licenses. They did start on the assessors, then they got to a certain point and kinda stopped, because then they were in a rush to get the treasures done. Then they worked on the treasures. They never did do anything for building and planning at all, they kind of forgot about it and they never did anything for business licenses, and that was all in the contract for them to do, which they did not do. So we ended up doing everything through ADS, we couldn't do nothing through.
Now who, cause I'm, I don't remember, who purchased ADS?
ADS, we.
That's the old one.
I know that.
That's our old one, and it, we were con, we were.
I thought that somebody had bought them, uh, bought that.
DEVNET bought them, actually. DEVNET bought them, so what we're doing is, they have a, we have an agreement that they will provide the, um, support through ADS for us until we can get into this new system.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's what you guys voted on, I think.
Yeah, yeah, no, I remember, but I was trying, wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, they did, they did buy that from Mark.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, but they did, um, agree to provide that support that we'll need to get us and transition us into the GSA program.
Okay.
And for the record, it does say the agenda request form, it has been reviewed by our district attorneys, so we're cool on that.
Well, no, I know, but I still had, cause I knew that some of them, it was functional.
No, 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 mine was separate, I just wanted that on the record.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
There's nothing against what you were saying, Kathy.
All right, so, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the CMN, CAMA system contract between GSA Corporation and Lander County with the plans provided and authorize, am I authorizing someone to sign?
I'll second the motion.
Myself or her, I would guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so Robert, are we ready for public, is there any public comment? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Brian, both aye.
All right, very good.
Muted. Unmuted.
All right, we've already handled number seven, so we're gonna just go ahead for correspondence, reports, future agenda items.
We have one request for a future agenda item?
Anything else?
You know, on the eleventh, our hearing, uh, is also on that one. June eleventh is our water hearing. For the GID.
Yes, that's correct, the, uh, uh, reading of the final of the ordinance, yes.
All right. That's all we have, yeah. That's all, okay, so we're gonna, uh, for public comment, for non-agendized items only.
Nobody had any more correspondence, I didn't get any correspondence.
I didn't have any, dude, um, do you have something?
No, I'm just up here for public comment.
Okay. I'll go ahead.
No, I'll let you lead.
Okay, so, um, for non-agendized, um, items only, persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend to make comments on any non-agendized items at the board's meeting, if any, and this, um, discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comments may be limited to three minutes per person, again, at the discretion of the board. Reasonable restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may not be restricted. So we'll head with public comment.
Uh, Lake and Sullivan for the record, so I'm just reading a public comment on behalf of a lady that lives in Eureka. She had reached out to myself and I talked to Keith about it and she asked if she could submit it in writing in an email and then just have me read it, she felt like that might be easier.
Who's it from?
Um, her name is Robin Evans.
And, hold on a second. Ted, um, will you listen to this public comment and then advise as to whether it actually needs to be an agendized item?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So, dear Lander County Commissioners, I'm Robin, uh, Perman Evans. I'm sending this email regarding questions concerning my father, George Perman's estate. Please see the enclosed documentation, she supplied, uh, some backup. In about two thousand, George Perman purchased six lots of tax property at county auction. My father was not a land developer and intended the lots to be used for himself or his family for the benefits of the family. The taxes have been paid on these lots consistently since two thousand. We have come to the knowledge that there is a system obligation fee somewhere between twelve thousand one hundred thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents and one thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars currently due on five of the lots as assessed by the Kingston Town Water Utility. A ten dollar and fifty cent per lot per month fee will continue to be owed, I guess, for all eternity. Since two thousand, no water services have ever been utilized. Please also see maps. Three of these lots located on Jefferson Drive may be used as one property and two lots located on Over Road would be used as one property. I would think theoretically that when a family member or someone else chooses to develop the lots, a domestic well would be a viable option. At this time, my sister and I are trying to determine the validity of my father's debts. She also has four different questions, I don't know if you want me to read those as well.
I, I really need a copy of that, so I can follow along. Could you make a copy real quick, Keith? We're gonna have discussion about this, I, I wanna read.
Well, we can't.
We're just gonna discuss it as public comment.
Okay.
Excuse me, Commissioner. Uh, this is Ted, we, we cannot discuss this matter.
Okay.
It's a public comment. What I would suggest is that my office looks at it and I'll talk to Keith and maybe we'll talk to the Kingston Water Authority and see if we can come up with anything.
Yeah, I would much rather to handle this thing in-house, like I, I want everything handled in-house.
So, Professor.
That, that's it.
That's it, so she'll just, give it to Ted, very good, thank you. All right, so then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Litigation, litigation meeting.
No.
Commissioner?
Cancelled, cancelled.
We need to cancel that litigation, please, Commissioner. For now. And I, I need you guys to hang around, please.
This conference is no longer being recorded.